Three, two, one.
Good afternoon, everyone. I'd like to call the meeting to order right now is one oh five P M. Friday, March twenty seven, twenty twenty. And City Club, we do the roll call, please.
Mayor Cha.
Here.
Vice Mayor Ho. Vice Mayor Ho absent.
She's right there. She's muted out.
She's still muted out? Oh, no.
Yeah, I saw somewhere that she was she was on.
Oh, she, okay. Vice Mayor Ho?
I'm here.
Councilmember Contreras?
Here.
Councilmember Do.
Here.
Councilmember Nguyen.
Here.
So everybody here, so please put your right hand over your heart and salute our flag. Please stand. I bless the legion to the flag.
To the flag of the United States of America.
And to the republic.
To the republic of which it stands.
One nation.
Under God.
Invisible. With liberty and justice for all. Thank you so much. Because of COVID nineteen, that's why the meeting is is conducted by teleconference and webwork conference only. So City Club, can you explain the oral communication?
Yes, so as we indicated in our in our agenda for yesterday, we were accepting oral communications via e comments or via email, and those that would be received would ultimately be sent to the to the city council and the mayor, and then would be summarized in the record during our communications. However, we didn't receive too many oral communications, so we're going to be reading them straight into the record. Also, we do have some attendees who wish to speak, and so if there are any attendees that are logged on to Zoom right now, if you just raise your hand, after I read all these received into the record, I will call you up to speak. There's actually a couple of speakers who sent e comments, so if you would prefer to, for those of you that turn in e comment, if you would prefer to speak instead of me reading it, please raise your hand as well.
So can you read the comments?
Yes. The first one is received from Camilla Overbeek. It says, Good afternoon, Mayor and City Councils. My name is Camilla Overbeek, resident of Westminster. Thank you for taking the time today to address the issue of evictions. There are many residents who are concerned as April draws near. I would also like to ask that you find new ways to communicate with the public regarding these meetings. I understand that the only requirement is for the notice to be displayed in a part of the meeting. However, when people are not supposed to be out in public, is notice really given? I'm also aware that people can have emails sent to them regarding meetings. I personally signed up for them, did not receive this one. With emergency special meetings happening frequently during these times, and with major changes being made to the upcoming special election, this might be a very good time for the city to use utilize its social media pages during the already existing community groups and educate and inform the public through those measures. In these times of uncertainty, it is imperative that the city use all means necessary to communicate and inform the public. If you need help finding the social media pages utilized by the community members here in Westminster, I will gladly help. Thank you for your time. Okay. Another comment received from Robert Smith. He says, Good afternoon, members of the Westminster City Council and other officials. For the reasons stated below, I urge you to pass ordinance two five six. I've been a resident for six years. Income persons have been hit by the hardest by COVID.
Can you hear the echo?
I do hear the echo. Okay, there. Rather, lower income persons have been hit the hardest by COVID nineteen. We are the persons who have been laid off the most. We have had, we may have tiny businesses that are now closed. Many of us are seniors with medical bills that prevent us from going outside to find other jobs. Landlords need rent monies to pay bills also, but they are already receiving almost daily assistance. Many banks, H U D, and the V A have announced forbearance on loans with no negative impact on their credit. Major commercial landlords have offered their tenants rent assistance, i.e. the Irvine Company. Renters need urgent protection from evictions. We are not asking for free rent. This one hundred twenty day period would allow us, will allow many of us, time to start receiving governmental assistance in S B A loans, et cetera, to help start paying some rent. I ask you to approve ordinance two five six five. I've also received another one from another comment from Ugochi Nicholson, and this is from the Public Law Center. It says, Dear Honorable Mayor and City Council, we submit this electronic comment on behalf of Public Law Center. The Public Law Center is a five oh one C three public interest law firm that advocates on behalf of low income residents in Orange County. For over thirty eight years, we have provided life-saving legal aid services and ensured the justice system for Orange County's most vulnerable residents. While we applaud the efforts of the city of Westminster to issue an urgency ordinance relating to a temporary emergency moratorium on evicting tenants, we write to oppose the proposed moratorium unless the city will commit to protect all tenants from evictions and remove all barriers from the ordinance number two five six five. That will, that was, will as drafted, prevent tenants who are unable to pay their rent due to a reduction in income due to COVID nineteen, or otherwise, from being able to avail themselves of the protections from evictions and risk them being displaced during a time where the governor of the state of California has issued shelter-in-place orders. Okay, and then we also received, let's see. Pauline Dong, who states, Please vote yes on the urgency ordinance. Please include a moratorium on rent increases in the ordinance. Please do what is right. Thank you for reading. And then from the Kennedy Commission, says, let's see, this is from Isuru S Ramos, the Kennedy Commission. And it states, Dear members of this council, the Kennedy Commission is a broad-based coalition of residents, community organizations that advocates for the protection of homes affordable for families earning less than twenty thousand dollars annually in Orange County. Formed in two thousand and one, the commission has been successful in partnering and working with Jersey and Orange County to create effective policies led to the new construction of affordable homes for lower-income working families. Given our state's high costs of housing and the extensive rent burden for many of our California families, we worry that any loss of wages related to the outbreak of COVID nineteen will only further imperil with homelessness our most at-risk families. We know that the need to protect residents that live paycheck to paycheck from the economic fallout of this virus includes protecting them against facing eviction and homelessness, which would only further spread this disease and make its containment harder if people don't have a home to care for the health, safety, and welfare of their families. Cities across the state have adopted ordinances to protect their residents. On March sixteenth, Governor Newsom said, Over the next few weeks, everyone will have to make sacrifices, but a place to live shouldn't be one of them. I strongly encourage cities and counties to take up this authority to protect Californians. I recommend your work on this urgency ordinance to protect Westminster tenants. While a great start, there are sections of ordinance that can be straightened. We recommend the following changes. Section one, C, Evictions, amend this section so that the acceptable causes for decreased income include the following. The tenant was or is sick with COVID nineteen or caring for a household or caring for a household or family member who was or sick with COVID nineteen. The tenant's compliance with a recommendation from a government agency to stay home, self-quarantine, or avoid congregating with others during the state of emergency. The tenants need to miss work to care for a homebound school-aged child. Section one, three, Timely Partial Payment, remove this section to provide greater flexibility for tenants experiencing substantial COVID nineteen-related financial impacts. Timely Partial Payment, the severity of financial impacts related to COVID nineteen can vary and may not be as easy documented. This section should be removed. This ordinance should act in faith that tenants will pay the amount of rent that they are able to on a monthly basis. For example, if a tenant has to stay home and/or care for homebound child or care for a family member, this will significantly impact household expenses such as groceries and other essentials. These expenses may be difficult to document as tenants may no longer have receipts for these purchases. Therefore, a tenant would have difficulty documenting the financial impact of wage losses and increased expenses. And lastly, section one, D, six, Repayment of Rent Required, extend the repayment period from one twenty to one eighty days. In addition to the eviction moratorium, we also urge that your urgency response include the following. Moratorium on Rent Increases Until the Crisis Has Been Evaded, Continue City Services and Utilities, including water and electricity, and deferral fees without interest until COVID nineteen crisis has been abated and agree to make payment arrangements without late fees once the situation has stabilized. And impose a moratorium on parking fees and late payment penalties for past parking violations for sixty days or until the COVID nineteen crisis has been abated. We urge that you pass an urgency ordinance with recommendations provided. Immediate assistance is necessary to keep low-income working families in their homes and not to exacerbate homelessness.
All right. Do we have any other comment?
So we have, on the line, we have Jody Boyd, who would like to speak. So we're gonna allow her to speak. Jody, are you there? She raised her hand. Ms. Boyd? Okay. We'll follow back. We'll we'll go back to that, and then we have one more, which is, we have Terry Rains.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, so should I go ahead?
Please.
Okay. Good afternoon. Terry Rains from Westminster. I only learned of this special meeting through a Voice of Orange County article published this morning. I did not receive the typical city council agenda notification via email that I am signed up for. After spreading the word about the meeting on social media as much as possible, it did not leave me much time to review the staff report and submit my e comments by the eleven A M deadline today. I am pleased city officials are considering this urgency ordinance imposing a temporary eviction moratorium since several surrounding cities have already adopted something similar. This is an unprecedented situation, and as city officials, you have to make difficult decisions to protect the residents and businesses of Westminster. I do have some concerns and questions about the ordinance, which I would like to share with you today. Number one, communication. Should this pass, how will the city notify residents, businesses, and landlords about the ordinance? Posting it on the city's website and issuing a press release is not enough. Keep in mind the many technology and language barriers in our city. Also, who will the city's contact person be? Should anyone have any questions about it, which may include legal interpretation? Number two, term. The ordinance states it is in effect until the expiration of the governor's executive order in twenty eight twenty, including any extensions. Why not provide that date, May thirty first, twenty twenty, and then state that it may be extended per any extensions made to the governor's order? You are assuming residents, businesses, and landlords can easily find the governor's order and get that date themselves, which is not realistic. Again, keep in mind the significant technology and language barriers out there. Number three, tenant definitions. It is unclear whether mobile home tenants include those who pay space rent but own their mobile homes. Is if the ordinance does does cover mobile home space rent for those residents, why not? It should. And why, what about residents who rent a room in a single-family home? Are they protected as well? Steps to qualify. I am concerned, and I'm sorry here, but I have, I have to, oh, I have to click on. I'm sorry, folks. I'm trying to read this from a screen, another screen. Sorry. Tenant, let's see, steps to qualify. I am concerned these steps are too big and will create challenges from both tenants and landlords, which could put the city in a precarious position. There are only two business days left before April first. Step one, state's tenants must notify their landlords in writing the day before the day rent is due of the substantial COVID nineteen-related financial impacts as defined in the ordinance. It does not provide how far ahead of time, so technically tenants can do so up until midnight the day before rent is due. Step two states, Within thirty days after the rent is due, the tenant must provide reasonable documentation in writing establishing such substantial COVID nineteen-related financial impacts. In my opinion, this is too vague. What constitutes reasonable documentation? Shouldn't the ordinance at least provide some examples of what that might be? If an employee has been told verbally to not work or reduce their hours, how can they document that? If a business has had to close or experience a significant loss of revenue, what are some ways they can document that? Does in writing also include a note on the manager's door? Step three states, On or before the day rent is due, the tenant must pay no less than the full amount of rent currently due, less the amount of COVID nineteen-related financial impacts the tenant has reasonably proven. Again, what defines reasonably proven? I realize the city cannot define every possibility, though some cities have tried to, but wouldn't providing some clear examples of how the related financial impacts might be documented help both tenants and landlords comply with the ordinance? And in summary, I hope council will adopt the urgent ordinance, but also consider and discuss the questions and concerns I and others have presented here. Sadly, it may be too late to incorporate any changes into the ordinance directly. Please note, I would have submitted my comments earlier had I known about the meeting yesterday. Perhaps the city can provide additional information and further clarification on some of these points in whatever communication is sent out to residents, businesses, and landlords about the ordinance. I suggest that communication include a full copy of the adopted ordinance and be put out in Spanish and Vietnamese as well. Although the city's website can be viewed in other languages, none of the link documents or press releases have been translated. Thank you for allowing me to present my comments today via e comments. It is my hope residents will be able to present oral comments for future meetings directly via the technology being used, which I'm being allowed to do right now, to conduct the meetings during the COVID nineteen pandemic. And just as addition, yes, the governor did. I did see that right as I was signing on, that the governor did just order an issue. So I'm sure that will supersede this, but I think that you should go ahead and discuss it in detail anyway and adopt it as suggested by your city attorney. Thank you.
Thank you. So.
So.
Do we have any other speaker?
Yes, so Jody Boyd just had a question, and that's what she wants for her comments. And she just says, I would like to know when the city council will talk about freezing the city budget. That's her. And then I did receive one last e comment, so just read that one, and that should be it. Says, My name's David Nguyen. I understand there will be a discussion in council vote about the renters' eviction temporary ban in city Westminster, and I'd like to voice my opinion from a landlord perspective. I understand the hardship that everyone is going through. I agree that everyone needs to step up and work together to find the best course of actions to get through this difficult time. Therefore, I personally support the temporary ban with conditions. I'd like to bring up a couple of points to the council. Number one, it is human nature to quickly come to a decision to support the ban on the renters' eviction during this difficult, unique time. However, there will be renters who still have jobs and income and are not directly or indirectly impacted by COVID nineteen, but they'll try to take advantage of temporary ban and not to pay rent. Landlords still have to pay their mortgage to lenders and/or investors, who are not obligated to provide relief to landlords. The landlords depend on rental income to pay their debts. They are no different than any other businesses that need to, that need income to pay for their expenses to survive. Therefore, if the council votes to support the temporary ban on renters' eviction, I would like to suggest that this, that specific language be added to the temporary ban to be applicable to renters who have a good record of paying rent, who can show proof of indirectly impacted by the COVID nineteen pandemic. The last thing the council wants to do now is allow non-impact renters to take advantage of the situation and create hardships on the landlord. Thank you, David Nguyen. And that is, that is all for oral communications.
Thank you so much, and next we have ordinance number two five six five, and urgency ordinance of Mayor and City Council of City Westminster relating to a temporary moratorium on evicting tenants and declaring the ordinance to be an emergency measure to take effect immediately upon adoption. So I really want to thank city attorney and city manager for the last few days. They worked really hard to come up with this ordinance, and I'd like to ask city attorney to explain to all members of the council and also the members from the public about this ordinance. Christian will do that. So, city attorney, is there anywhere that you can explain, you know, as detailed as you could regarding this ordinance to all members of the council and to the member of the public?
Yes, Christian Benhausen is going to make that presentation.
Yep.
Hello. Hello, can you hear?
Yep.
Yes. All right, everyone can hear me, right?
Correct.
Okay, let me, I'll go. I'm at Mayor and Council. As you're aware, there's been a national emergency declared also by the state and the county, and you yourself confirmed on March nineteenth that a local declaration of emergency. And at that time, you had asked us to prepare this ordinance if the governor had failed to act. So that was kind of where we left off on it. On March sixteenth, the governor issued executive order N dash twenty eight dash twenty, which suspended state laws that would restrict a city's ability to impose limitations on evictions. And as Councilmember Contreras just mentioned, there's been a subsequent order, which is which says that it supersedes that prior order to the degree that there's a conflict. So it may still be in effect where there is no conflict. That order is N dash thirty seven dash twenty. So we're going to probably insert that number into this ordinance if you choose to adopt it. But what we've done is tried to prepare an ordinance that's consistent with what the governor said was permissible. This is an urgency ordinance, which would mean that it would go into effect immediately, and it requires a four-fifth vote. And we've stated in the ordinance the reason for the urgency related to COVID nineteen and the declarations of emergency. So basically, let me just summarize what we have here in this ordinance. As written, as presented right now, it would remain in effect until the expiration of the governor's executive order N dash twenty eight twenty. So we'd probably want to amend that to make that, say, thirty N dash thirty seven twenty. That's the new one. And if you look at that new order, it says that it's in place until May thirty first. And so what we have here is including any extensions that might subsequently be granted by order of the governor. So the way it's presently written, if you substitute that number in, it'd be in effect till May thirty first, unless the governor extends it. If he does, then this would continue in effect. As written, the ordinance currently applies to all residential and commercial tenants within the city. In looking at the governor's new order, it doesn't seem to call up commercial. It talks about residential dwellings. So if you're adopt, there are some places here where if you adopt this, there may be greater protections being provided, such as this here. So you're, it says residential and commercial tenants. It does not apply to any rent that was due prior to March fourth, which was the governor's original declaration of emergency. So if somebody was not paying rent prior to that date, that would still be owed. As written in section C of this ordinance, if you're following along, I'm going to kind of go in order here. It basically says, No landlord shall seek to evict a residential tenant, a residential or commercial tenant, if both of the following things are true. One, the basis for this eviction is the non-payment of a rent or foreclosure that has arisen out of a substantial decrease in that tenant's household or business income. And then there's a little definition as to what that might involve, a layoff or production in the number of the hours of work or substantial medical expenses as well. And the second thing that would need to be met is that there's the decrease in household or business income was caused by the COVID nineteen pandemic. So it has to be a direct correlation between those two. It can't be for other reasons. Looking at the next section, which is section D of the ordinance. In order to qualify, a tenant has to do three things. One, they have to have notified the landlord in writing, and as currently written, it says, Before the day the rent is due. And I note that in the governor's new order, he says the same thing. But then, I'm trying to find it, I think he said, or within a reasonable period of time after not to exceed seven days. So if you want to be consistent with that, you could say that they must notify the landlord before the rent is due or within a reasonable period of time afterward not to exceed seven days. That's one thing you might change, just to be consistent with the governor's order. The second thing is that, within thirty days after the rent was due, they need to have provided reasonable documentation in writing to the landlord establishing what those financial impacts were, the COVID nineteen impacts. That is an effort to, to at least cause the tenant to have to establish that these are legitimate expenses that they've incurred. And if you look at the governor's order, it actually does identify some things that they could do, such as getting something in writing from their employer, pay stubs, medical bills. It says, Signed letters or statements from an employer explaining the tenant's changed circumstances that they've been laid off or that they've had reduced hours, something like that that gives the landlord a basis to actually believe that what is being said is true. And the last of the three requirements that is in here is that they need to make a partial payment. So honor before the date that the rent is due, the tenant must pay no less than the full amount of the rent that's currently due, less the amount of COVID-related financial impacts that they're able to prove. And it is really hard for us to get into the business of trying to determine what's reasonable. I think that's something that, you know, that really the tenant's going to just have to provide something that's, that's fair. And I think the landlord is gonna, that's gonna be have to be between the landlord and the tenant on that. And then if there's, if it ultimately went to a court or something, then the court would make that decision. But I think the court's going to defer in favor of the tenant probably there if they provided a note from their employer or something that clearly shows that they've had an impact. I've given an example, and then the next section, which is labeled section four. I'm not really sure how that happened, but I apologize. That really should be section E. Four, five, and six, the Word document apparently made this change all by itself when I sent it. But it should be sections E, F, and G. So I would appreciate it if in your vote you would authorize that we make that change. Section four would be E, section five is F, and section six is subsection G. But those, to summarize that section, which is labeled four, but is E, the landlord shall not serve an eviction notice if, if the tenant has, has done one of two things. If the rent isn't overdue yet for thirty days or more, then, then the tenant needs to have at least notified the landlord and have made the partial rent payment. The documentation doesn't need to be provided yet because they haven't gotten past thirty days. The second situation would be if the rent is overdue for more than thirty-one days. In that situation, it's the same thing. They need to have provided the notice. They need to have provided the written documentation, and they need to have made the partial payment. Finally, and or actually in section, what's labeled as five, which should be F, it defines what a commercial tenant is, and it defines a residential tenant. I added this as late as yesterday because there was a concern that it didn't cover mobile home parks. And so I've tried to add clear language there that indicates that it does cover residential uses, residential dwellings, including single-family, multifamily homes, mobile homes, or other structures lawfully used as a residential dwelling under the municipal code. And then finally, the last section, which is labeled six, which should be G. It, it, what this is, this, what, there's nothing in here that says that the tenant does not have to ultimately pay the rent. It merely is, is stopping an eviction from occurring. And so the landlord, they're going to have to pay the rent the way this is currently written in no later than a hundred and twenty days from the expiration of the term, which again is currently May thirty first, unless the governor extends it. So the, you know, if the landlord and the tenant work something out, they could, you know, something longer than that would be between them. But as written, the ordinance says a hundred and twenty days from the expiration of the governor's order. Now, finally, let me just mention that in section three of this ordinance, it does talk about future governors' orders, such as the one that was just issued today. It says that if a governor issues an executive order which prohibits residential and commercial evictions throughout the state relating to COVID nineteen, then that order is going to control. So to the degree that the governor's order conflicts with this, that governor is going, or that order is going to control. But I think there, as I mentioned at the beginning, there are some aspects to this that are going to be. For instance, we're clarifying that we're covered, that it should cover mobile homes. This one also covers commercial tenants. So my recommendation would be that if the council wants to proceed with it, they go ahead and adopt this ordinance with, with the changes that I mentioned about the last three paragraphs being E, F, and G. And also making the change, also making the change that references the new governors, the new govern, governor order. And also making the change, also making the change that references the new governors, the new govern, governor order.
Yeah, so I think that, thank you, city attorney for explaining really detail about the ordinance. I think the ordinance needs to clearly state everything and this ordinance will follow the governor's order. So unless members of the city council have any question or concern, I'd like to move to approve this ordinance. Vice Mayor Ho?
I second, no, I don't have any questions, I think it's great, very detailed, you.
So we have the motion in second to approve this urgent emergency ordinance.
And just to clarify that, as revised to correct as Christian stated, the, the typographical errors on the, on the section. That was, so that was a motion made by Mayor Ta, seconded by Vice Mayor Ho, so vote.
Roll call vote?
Yes, it's going to be a roll call vote, so Mayor Ta?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Ho?
Here.
Say yes?
Yes.
Want some member Contreras? There's someone's echoing.
Echoing.
Yes, someone's echoing right here. Councilmember Doe? Councilmember Doe? Are you still muted?
Am you, unmute yourself.
Stop.
There you go.
There you go, councilmember Doe?
Phone's off, okay, here it is.
There it is.
I was going to have a question about what about the, the resident who ran a room in a single family, are they going to be protected as well?
Yes, they will be.
They will be, are we gonna include that in the ordinance?
It's already.
I don't see that.
You could, if you want, include it by specifically for the great nature of the relationship. Landlord-tenant relationship, so it's automatically covered by the nature of the legal relationship. If you want to specifically spell it out, you could do so, but they are indeed covered.
Okay, cool. Yeah.
Okay, and then councilmember Nguyen?
Yes.
Okay, so that motion carried five to zero to adopt urgency ordinance number two, five, six, five, entitled. An urgency ordinance in the city council of the city of Westminster relating to temporary moratorium on eviction tenants and declaring. The ordinance could be an emergency measure to take effect immediately upon adoption.
Thank you so much, and next we have.
Mayor Mike Clark, something for you, Mr. Mayor?
Yeah.
Mike Clark, something for you?
Please.
Okay, I think it's important to understand that we're establishing standards today by this ordinance. What we are not enforcing agency, the enforcing are the courts of the state of California. So what we're doing is establishing rules for which landlord and tenant will have to abide by. If there's to be any enforcement or legal determination, all of that will occur through the courts. We are not the enforcing agency, we're simply establishing the legal standards by landlord, which landlords and tenants must abide in the future.
Thank you so much for that, and anything else, city attorney?
Mayor have a comment?
Councilmember Contreras?
Yes, sir. I just want to acknowledge the council for coming together at this time. As you know, there are a number of families that are hurting, that are facing uncertainty in this difficult time. People that are losing their jobs and no fault of their own. But I just want to again acknowledge everyone for coming together on this important matter. People are counting on us to support them in any way, in any ways that we can. And so again, I just want to acknowledge everyone for stepping up for, for working people here in Westminster and. And also the businesses, we have a number of businesses in our community, up and down every street, every strip mall. I mean, we've always talked about how many strip malls we have here in Westminster. How many businesses that are here. To live the dream, and I'm glad that we came together to, to support their efforts in this difficult time.
Thank you so much for that, anything else, any other council member?
Yeah, if I may say a few words.
Please.
You know, it's just, it's just, it's a bad time for our city as well as the entire nation. With this coronavirus, you know, it just broke my heart to travel throughout the city and see all the businesses being shut down. Restaurants are being opened, but only two halls and it's just devastating. I would like to. Ask the council to have a meeting and put on the agenda for the next meeting, whatever, however you want to do it, immersive meeting or something. To put a hold on all the contract services which has recently passed. Because of the uncertainty of our financial crisis due to this devastating. Pandemic that affects the financial. Of the city in, in, in such a way that it's going to be unbelievably. It's going to be affect about our state of the city. So I would like to. Put on the agenda for the next meeting to have the council to adopt the. Resolution to put a hold on all the contract services, non-essential contract services. So that we can, you know, reevaluating the, the state of our financial status.
Thank you for that request and city clerk or city attorney, do we need to go on that request?
You do.
Okay, so we have the request from councilmember Doe. That in the future that the city council, that, that the city will, will have that item in the future meeting, I second that.
All right, so that's a request from councilmember Doe, seconded by Mayor Ta. And that's to consider a resolution for non-essential contracts, to put a hold on all of the non-essential contracts that we currently have. As. Mayor Ta?
Yes.
Yes.
Hi.
Yes.
And councilmember Nguyen?
Yes.
And that motion carried five to zero.
All right, so Vice Mayor Ho?
Well, I would like to ask our staff if I could have some, like a list of important phone numbers for our residents. As well as help, so when I get questions, I know I get a lot of questions asked these days. And there are a lot of new things that I, I'm, I'm, I'm learning and new phone numbers. So if I, if I, if we could have some, something in writing or maybe just email over to us, that'd be the quickest way. That'd be great. Other than that, I think I'm fine, thank you. And I hope everybody is doing well and I think we are really all coming together to take care of our residents. So I'd welcome anybody to give us a call if we need any help or anything that we could do to help, anything that we don't know about. So, yeah, so thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Ho, and next councilmember Nguyen?
No comment.
Thank you so much, and I'd like to thanks our city staff or members of the council for spending your time to participate in the meeting. I want to thanks our police officer, I want to thanks our firefighters for their dedication. And if the resident or visit in the city, if you have any question or concerns, you're more than welcome to call our city number seven one four eight nine eight three three one one. And for non-emergency number for our police department, seven one four eight nine eight three three one five. And all the emergency circumstance, please call nine one one. And thank you so much for your support and be safe. And with that, I'd like to adjourn the meeting.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.